Well, my watch says 5:31.
It says 5:31 is what the time is.
Well, we can wait and do it later, but he might not be here.
Oh, okay. All right, well, you want to take that?
He asked.
No, no.
Come back and do it later.
No, how long do I need to be able to come home? You don't want me to sit here for another 90 minutes. You want to introduce? Tommy, you want to come up here and introduce our new animal control officer?
Thanks, Mayor. Members of the council, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time and introduce you to our new animal services guy, Judarius Graves. Comes to us by way of Jackson, Mississippi. He went to work for them in June of 2015, and he started here with us in November this year. There's not a lot of people out there looking for an animal services job that has that kind of experience, so we were glad to get ahold of him. The one thing I'll say negative is that as close as he was to Tuscaloosa, he's not a Bama fan. We overlooked that. But I just wanted you guys to know who he was and if you had any questions for him or, you know, about what his ideas are for animal services, to answer any questions you got. Mainly, I just wanted you to know who he was.
Well, welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Official capacity.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a nice...
Thank you.
Yeah, glad you're out here. Have you had any calls so far yet?
I got a few so far, just normal stray dog, this body, or deceased animals. Nothing spectacular yet.
Oh, yeah, I hate running by deceased animals. That makes me depressed.
The goats by my house, the donkey and the goats. I think one of the goats died because the birds are back there like crazy.
I picked one up yesterday.
Oh, really?
Is that Rob Morse's property?
Indeed.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, good luck. I know that's a tough job.
Thank you.
If we can be of help, just let us know. All right, let's move into executive session since there's nobody here and we won't be wasting anybody else's time. We're going to move into executive section pursuant to Section 551.071 and 551.074, All right, we're going to start this regular session. Yeah, it's on. See, they heard me. Sorry, I've got to have my glasses. All right, so first off, we are going to do our invocation. Sandra, do you want to introduce the person doing our invocation?
I would like to introduce Pastor Justice. Actually, Mayor, he lives in your communities, correct, Seaple Chase? I met him a couple of months ago, and with him being a citizen of Kennedy, I just thought it would be great for him to attend the meeting and do the invocation. So, would you please come up?
Everybody revise for our invocation, and then maybe we'll talk to you about serving on a board later on.
Tell us about your church.
Christ, I pastor, Christ Senate where I worship at is Christ Senate Missionary Baptist Church that has been going on now for 16 years, and we're happy the Lord has really blessed us with that. Let us pray. Eternal Master, in the name of your Son, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we do bow head before your holy throne of grace, humbly, Heavenly Father, this day, seeking your wisdom for this council, seeking your wisdom, Heavenly Father, for the city, for the city managers, and asking, Heavenly Father, that you would continue to keep your strong arms protection around the police officers and detectives and all of those, Heavenly Father, that is standing and holding up, Heavenly Father, the rights of the citizens here in Kennedale, Texas. Thank you, God, for these men and women that serve on this board. Heavenly Father, we pray, God, we invoke your wisdom upon them tonight. There's so many things to be dealt with, so we pray, God, that you would shower your blessings upon this meeting for your glory, your honor, and your majesty. Be for our good. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Chad, will you lead us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Looks like we need some Texas pledging training. All right, first up is the citizens' visitor forum, and we're going to bring up Sarah Johnson.
I also know Brother Justice. We took some classes together and met each other at the Kennedy, at Trinity Valley Seminary College. It's like for anybody who's studying Bible studies and wants to be a pastor or just learn more about the Word, the true Word of God. Brother Justice is one of the teachers out there. He was a student. Me and him were students together. He was one of my best encouragers. He goes, "Sister Sarah, you can make it. Just keep going. You can do it." All right. I want to just come tonight here on behalf of senior outreach and thank every one of the council people that were involved in getting the word out about our Thanksgiving drives and who helped with our Christmas. Thank you a lot, Chad and Linda. Your five churches this time were growing. We added another church, so now we have five churches. Thank goodness for the churches helping with the turkeys, so we made our quota for our turkeys, and we had 107 meals and 80 turkeys. So hopefully next year we'll beat that goal. And we had 75 care packages for the seniors down at the senior center. And if you know of anybody that's out in the community that is a shut-in, please let me know so I can go visit them and see what their needs are and I can help them. I have three or four shut-ins that I visit already. I don't mind. I've got Thelma, and we've got other ones in our organization that can go out and meet their needs and see what they need. Update on our center, going to push it to March because we need an electrician to come in and go back over the wiring and make sure it's good. You know, it's at my church, and we pass inspections, but I want to make sure it's good because it's in the older part of the building. Our church was here since 1949, and the back part of the building is really old, so we want to make sure it's good. But I'm already getting donations for walkers, wheelchair, different things that elderly might not can afford on their own. Send them to me. I have them at my house. Somebody needs something, send them to me. I can get it to them right away. And I want to thank all of you for sharing and helping. You know, hopefully, we want to make our second year even better than our first year so we do more and more things for the community. And I think Pat Tarkington, she's here tonight. Me and her work really close together, and she lets me know when they need something, and I try to get it for them. So I appreciate every one of you who's helped us, and Sandra especially, and Linda and Chad, and I hope the rest of you get on board. I don't bite. We're fine. We do good things. We don't take any money for ourselves. We do it all for the community.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for all your hard work. You did have on here when the senior citizens coming to remodel. Just an information thing, we did talk about that just briefly in the back as we look forward to moving a bond package perhaps forward for new police fire, to use some of that money possibly. We're looking at the feasibility of doing something with the senior center, too. Next up, Lynda Neal.
Yes, I'm Lynda Neal, and I am the Vice President of this Advisory Council of the Kennedale Senior Center. And we want to thank, I want to thank council members that have participated in offering all hands on deck in helping with what needs to be done at the senior center. Thanks go out to Thelma Kovek and Sarah Cotton with the senior outreach of Kennedale. To all others that have participated in seeing that the seniors received complete Thanksgiving dinners, and also we received Christmas gifts from the participants, and we want to thank all of the council members and everyone that participated. And this is from all the participants and from the staff of Kennedale Senior Center. And we want to thank you all for your participation in our center. Several of you have been over to our center. If you haven't been, then we'd like for you to come and visit us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, updates from the city council. I'm going to go the other Chad.
Lots of stuff, so it doesn't sound like it's working. There it goes. Participated with Sandra, Sarah and Ms. Cotton and them with some of the senior stuff. That was fun getting to shake some people's hands and meet some new people and some fresh faces. Yeah. They sure are. Great, great people to be around. Yep, and so did that. Gosh, it's been a busy last month, just so many things going on and around our community. You know, if you didn't come to our tree lighting ceremony, hopefully you'll be there next year because that was a blast getting to see all of our kids perform and seeing how much talent's in our school district. I know we've got that coming up here in just a minute, too, but we've got such a great community, and we should all be very proud of that. And just with everything that's going on in our community, we should all hold our heads high and proud because, man, we're awesome. That's all I got.
Lynda?
Yes, I attended the tree lighting as well. Good job, by the way, MC. And then also the seniors, was their sponsor for one of their bingo's this past, what was it, last Wednesday? And that was nice to be there. They had a speaker attending from Catholic Charities, which was very informative to the seniors. It's a type of transportation that's offered for a minimal fee, and if you need more information on that, Pat with the senior center, she can help you with that, or if you know a senior that needs help with it, with transportation. Also attended the mayor's banquet with the mayor and mayor pro tem. That was very nice. I'm not going to take his spot there. He can elaborate on that. Very good speaker. Also, the bell ringing, again, I'm not going to take his spot. I wasn't able to help with ringing the bell, but I did show up and do my part to support the mayor and his, the drive that they had for that. Also, the Methodist Church, they had their fundraiser last month for their quarter auction. It's just a community thing. And then also angel tree participation. So tis a season for benevolence.
I'll come back to you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Josh? Chris?
I also attended the tree lighting, and Chad, you did do a great job, and there was a lot of great entertainment that night if you weren't there. Attended one of our weekly community dinners again this month, got to meet a couple of folks and just spent some time serving some people in our community that are in need of a nice warm meal and just some visiting. Attended the green space meeting, which is, if you haven't gone online and taken part in the survey, we're working on the development of the linear park system and working with the forestry service, and it's a good cause. It's a good opportunity. There's some information about that out in the hall. If you didn't see that on your way in, take a few minutes and look at that on your way out. And then I'm sure Brown will talk about it. Also, attended an online Q and A that the mayor has started doing where people can go online at a given time, and you can ask him about anything you want, from history to what's going on in the community, and he'll visit with you and give those answers online. You can go back and watch that at another time. It's on the mayor's Facebook page.
I've actually been sick for the last month, but I did get to attend the Tarrant County Mayor's Council banquet along with the mayor and Linda, and also the tree lighting. I just want to tell Leslie what a great job she's doing. It gets better every year, so thank you. We have a great community, and, you know, it seems like we're coming together every year. So again, Leslie, thank you for everything that you do.
All right, I did the bell ringing. Thanks to Josh for coming out. George and his grandson did some bell ringing. Lynda came by and gave a donation. I know the superintendent came by and helped bell ring for a little bit, and Lori Sanders. Where's Lori? Lori out there anywhere? Lori came out and helped do some bell ringing. Now, we're not going to win because the mayor of Mansfield raises $70,000 every year, but as long as we beat Burleson, I'm good with that. I attended the TRTC meeting, which is the Transportation Coalition. Again, we're still talking about in ways of helping seniors, expanding the VIA program in which people can get a ride to places in Arlington for $3 there, $3 back. It's in a Mercedes-Benz van. It's great for seniors, for those who need to get to a doctor visit or to go shopping, or even people who need a job, and they can get someplace for $3 there and $3 back. And so it's been pretty successful. They'd like to expand it. Also, attended with George on Friday the Dallas Chamber of Commerce Transportation Summit, and they're talking about having the high-speed rail up and running by the year 2026 so that you'll be able to ride to Dallas from Houston in 90 minutes in luxury. And they say the price will be dynamic pricing depending on the time period, but the price of probably a bus trip is what they're thinking, is to be able to do that. So that's exciting. And I attended my first meeting of the 911 Emergency District Board. I got to put on that. We spent $5 million in five minutes. Amazing. We bought for one city 13 radios at $1.3 million. Police radios are apparently very expensive. So, and then next month I'll be serving as the Chair of the Tarrant County CDBG Grant Proposal. So if we have a grant, I think we got a grant coming up, I'm going to make sure that Kennedale is well-heard to get that grant money. And I also attended NLC down in San Antonio as I serve on the Youth Education and Families Council and the Transportation Infrastructure Advocacy Board. So a busy month. And as Chris said, I do now do a Facebook Live, doing one on Saturday with the Vice President of the School Board, John Clark. We'll be doing it at John's mansion. I think he's got like 40 bedrooms and 30 rooms for his servants. Who knows? I don't know. And we're going to be on at 7 o'clock answering any and all questions that you might have. So it's another step for transparency, and if I don't know the answer, I'll make it up. No, I'll check and find out what the answer is. And so please tune in. So far, we've had 600 views on both of them, and so far the questions have been pretty good. All right, so now the fun stuff. We are going to do a proclamation honoring the Kennedale High School Lady Cats 2019-2020 volleyball team. And I'd like to say this was my idea, but it wasn't. It was Councilman Josh Alton who said, "Let's get this done." And so if Josh will come down to the front with me and help me do this, and I'll read the proclamation to the men. If we can get the volleyball team to come up and stand up here. All right, so this is the proclamation. Honoring the 2019-2020 General High School Lady Cats volleyball team, Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. Whereas the teamwork, dedication, sportsmanship, and talent of the 2019-2020 KHS Lady Cats volleyball team earned these students a season record of 37 and 8, a district record of 12 and 0, and the honor of competing in the UIL volleyball class 4A state championship. And whereas this team brought honor to Kennedale ISB and the entire city of Kennedale by becoming the district 9-4A champion for the second year in a row, securing the first trip to the UIL state tournament. And whereas members of the team, including, Amaya Constantino? No? Lilian Whitecheck? Grayson Reed? What? Okay, is that working? Taylor Paybee? Bridget Barton? All right. All right, Simon Hillbiller? Simon? Simon? Hillbiller Center. Angel Mihawk? Oh, all right, so that's a little... Look, I took Russian in college. It does me no good here. Ella Childers?
Yes, yes.
Taylor Poole? Rachel Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. Brittany Tran? I skipped, oh, I skipped on people. Katie Spell? Claire Ingram Pepper? Casey Gary? Alex Youngblood? Who's True Johnson? Is that her? Because I'm probably the only True Johnson in the room. And Mikayla McKenna Earl. All right. And whereas head coach Kelly Carr, assistant coaches Cassie Bora and Rachel Dixon, managers and trainers Brittany Tran, Jay Blumheim, Charlie Wood?
Jay Wood.
Caroline?
Janet? Yeah, right.
Is that check?
Yes. Please have a family.
Shannon Johnson? And the players' parents and families, that's, which I answered here for the day. Excellent. Were integral in that esteemed victory. Whereas KHSD students, administration, faculty, and staff, among the fans throughout the community, have had the privilege of proudly supporting the Lady Cats volleyball tournament during this historic secession. Secession? Now, therefore, I'm Ron Johnson, head of Kennedale, to hereby recognize and congratulate the 2019-2020 KHS Lady Cats volleyball team on their outstanding accomplishments and commitments to always dream bigger and test them whereof. I here unto, set my hand and cause the sealed city of Kennedale to be affixed this day, the 7th of December, 2019, I mean, Lady Cats volleyball team day. Woo! No, we have two colors. I don't know what they're saying.
Okay. Somebody?
Wait, you're leaving? We have an exciting rezoning case coming up. Yeah, you better go. It's not exciting. We have dead service to talk about. Yes. Thank you, Pastor Justice.
Thank you.
Updates from the city manager.
Mayor, I've got, first of all, violation of my number one rule is to never follow the mayor at a microphone, but I do have one announcement, a comment I'd like to make about the Fathom project, just to keep people up to speed. We sent a notice out. Can't hear me? Yeah, it's on. Can you hear me now? I'll try to speak louder. Sorry. I just, I sent a notice out to the public. We posted on our website about our issue with Fathom, the vendor that handles our customer service, the fact that they've gone out of business. We are continuing to work to remedy that problem. We sent a notice out again on November the 10th, and I would encourage all citizens to continue to watch our website and other media to try to determine exactly what the next step is. But at this moment, we have contracted with another company. We expect utility bills to be sent out to all of our water customers or utility customers toward the end of December. If you would, ask that you watch for those bills. They will have instructions on how to pay them. There will be some changes in the way you pay your utility bill for December and perhaps for January and February as we continue to work to migrate all of our customer service to the city of Arlington. So continue to watch for announcements that we will make. Right now, the company called Muni Billing will send out your utility bills. There will be instructions on how to pay those bills. When you get them, you will be able to pay them here at City Hall. The downside at this point is, as of today, you will not be able to pay your water or utility bills with the use of a credit card or a debit card. Hopefully, we will have that corrected and a new service in place so that you can do that by the time the December bills go out, but I can't guarantee that as we're sitting here tonight. But please watch for those announcements on the city's webpage. We'll provide you with as much information as we can as things change. So Mayor, I just wanted to make sure people are aware that we are continuing to work on this issue very diligently, and I think we will have a transition that's relatively seamless for our customers.
And George, could you talk real briefly about the COG letter about complete streets and the beginnings of that?
Well, we have worked with the Council of Governments to try to determine if we can acquire and be awarded some funding to do planning for Kennedale Parkway that would help us enhance the operations and the aesthetics and the appearance of Kennedale Parkway to make it a complete street that's safer for pedestrians, that's more aesthetically pleasing to the community. And we've gotten a very positive response that they're going to incorporate and include some monies in their budgets and in their work programs to help us do that planning and then follow that up in a following year with, hopefully, some construction funding to make improvements to the Parkway that we can all be very proud of. So that's progressing. We've gotten a very positive response from the Council of Governments at this point, although we don't have the details yet.
All right. November financial reports from the city and the EDC. Lakita? You want to pop up just in case there's any questions?
We have included the November financials for the city and the October financials for the EDC. I can take any questions if you have any.
I like the way you're putting this out. I think this is much, much clearer for me to see.
Thank you.
You put in there what the percentage of the budget is that we've spent so far. That's helpful for me, I think. So as you know, we are on a fun...
we are on a fund balance shortage of about three days. What are we doing in the meantime? Because I've seen that pop up. People saying, what is the plan? I know we've talked about the plan. What are we doing to help build that fund balance?
We're just trying to achieve as much savings as we can. Luckily, I believe that we, once we're out of it for fiscal year 19, we real, we will realize more of a savings than we anticipated. If you can remember, when we passed the budget, we were projecting fiscal year 19 to end with about a little bit over $200,000 of a, of a deficit. And so we are not expecting that quite that much, which will help the fund balance moving forward. And, and then just in addition to that, trying to save in every way that we can. We're reviewing contracts. You know, we have a lot of contracts. One of them is on the agenda tonight. We have two things on the agenda tonight, actually, that should realize savings for the city. So we're working hard to find any possible way that we can save.
Any other questions for Lakita? Nope. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. These matters appear in previous agendas, require little or no deliberation in a considered routine. A discussion is required. We can remove them for separate consideration. Does anybody want anything removed?
I just, I just have one correction to the December 3rd minutes. It's minimal.
Okay. And just make the motion that you want it with those corrections.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction to the December 3rd council minutes, by striking the words "work session" at 5:30 PM.
All right. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Please enter your vote. Motion passes five zero. All right. Item number one. Consider authorizing city staff and consultants to proceed with refunding for debt service savings to city outstanding combination tax revenue and certificates of obligation series 2010.
Hello.
Hello.
We are looking at a refunding, or in other words, refinancing some of the city's current debt. As you know, we have certificates of obligation from 2010. That is actually EDC debt. But at any rate, it, what the refunding does is lowers the amount of money that the city will have to pay or that the EDC will have to pay in debt service over time. And what that will do is improve the fund balance in the EDC. So I've asked our financial advisor, Mark McLinni, to be here this evening, and he's provided you with the PowerPoint presentation that's in front of you. And he will walk you through what that looks like and what the exact savings will be. And so we're asking the city council to consider approving us to move forward with the refunding of the 2010 certificates of obligations. So if you don't have any questions for me, I'll bring up Mark McLinni from Samco Capital.
We may bring you back up afterwards, but.
Okay.
Yep.
Mayor and council, my name is Mark McLinni with Samco Capital Markets. Been working with the city for some time. Some new faces here that I haven't seen before. In an effort to always be looking at your existing debt and look for savings. This is not borrowing new money. This is taking out existing and replacing it with lower interest rates. So at your dais is a couple-page summary. You have the 2010 certificates of obligation that have $1,275,000 outstanding, and they're at interest rates between 4% and 5%. The maturity schedule on those goes from 2021 until 2030. And we have the right, when we sold the bonds, we gave ourselves the right, the city, to take them from the investor on May 1st, 2020, at our choice. So if rates are lower, we can call the bonds, take them from the investor, and replace them with new bonds. So what this shows on the bottom left, it's projected annual savings. We don't know what the final results will be. We want to come to you, get permission to take it out, to bid. And then we'd come back here January 21st at your council meeting with final interest rates. And at that point, city council would either authorize a new bond issue to replace the old. And in theory, we would do that if savings are sufficient, or not. So on the bottom left-hand column, you can see what we're doing. We have the prior debt service. This is the debt service that you have left on the existing bonds.
Hang on just a second. Do we have that up there for the screen?
It is not on the screen.
Leslie? No?
So on the left-hand side is your current debt service. The refunding debt service is what the new bonds were projecting to be. And you get savings. Roughly speaking, the savings are an average of $12,000 a year. And then we present value it back because when we show bond issues, we have to get approval from the Attorney General of the state of Texas. They require present value to be included there. The summary on the far right is we would refund $1,275. We would have a refunding bond, a new bond of $1,255. We would be taking out an average interest rate of 4.5% and replacing them with interest rate at 2.35% to get that savings of $124,000. That savings is net, after all costs of issuance. So we're projecting this in these numbers at a higher interest rate than I think we'll get. I think if we borrow today, we don't know what rates will be a month from now, but we would be sub 2.25. 2.25%. This is showing 2.35% just to give a little bit of leeway in, in the market moving up or down. With your approval tonight, we'd get with Lakita and George, we would put a bid form out on the street and bid these bonds out on the 21st. We would come in with the best bid and in theory authorize it, again, if the savings are sufficient to proceed. If it's not sufficient, we're not out anything. No costs. It's, it's only cost if we proceed. That's everything I have. It's not huge numbers, but we're looking at every item on the budget to see where we can get savings. And, and this is no new money. It is solely refunding existing money and lowering the annual debt service costs.
Questions? Josh? Chris?
No, just to make it clear to everybody, so attempting to get a lower rate is no cost.
Correct.
There's no administrative fees.
Nope. It, it, there'll be fees if, if. Right. If, if all of a sudden they come in at interest rates of 3.5%. Something happens in the market, and it's not worth doing. And we're going to say, let's not do this. In theory, in practice, what we're going to find is rates between 2 and 2.25, and it's going to be worth pursuing.
I just want to make sure the citizens know we're not going to spend money to try to save money.
No, correct. Correct.
Sandra? Linda? Jan? So you're saying this would average out of savings over the 10 years of about $12,600 a year?
Yes, sir.
And so how does that affect? As you know, our fund balance is low. Is this, is this going to help us with our fund balance?
Well, it, it's not exactly perfect because this is paid for by the EDC. So this is going to lower your EDC payment by $12,000.
Right.
Where we're struggling is in the general fund. We don't have any bonds that are currently callable that we can take from the investor right now on the general fund. So we're still looking at, one of the things I was sharing with Lakita, perhaps this $10,000 savings has to meet a EDC project, but that could possibly be used on a project on the general fund that then frees the money up on the general fund. But it has to be an allowable purpose for the EDC to get over to be used in the general fund.
So are you saying something like maybe a street project that might have an economic development use, but also would be beneficial to city traffic?
That would be an allowable purpose. But that would have to be, you know, the EDC would have to okay, the EDC board would have to okay that expenditure.
And you would agree we need to increase our fund balance?
George, Lakita, and I, we worked very hard with Standard and Poor's. I was really, really pleased with the results we got back from the rating agency that they put us, they didn't lower our rating. They put us on a credit watch because it probably deserved. But the, your staff did such a good job of saying, we are going to get to where we need to be. There's nothing we can do, looking back. It's how we can go forward. They are aware, we are aware. We don't want to do a public sale out to new money issue right now in a, in a non-emergency. But no, we need to build up the fund balance and those reserves. And it's just going to take some time. I've, but George worked with a lot of places over the years. Lakita's been to other places. I've been doing this for a long time. I have seen this happen before. And it just takes, it will take some time to work out. And if we can get over the hump, which we will, it, it will happen quicker than you think.
Any other questions? Any questions for Lakita?
I was just going to add that, you know, the EDC debt is different from the city's debt. But any opportunity to save across any fund, you know, would be smiled upon by, you know, any rating agency. In the long run, we just need to create savings where we can. And this is one opportunity that will not cost us anything. If they go out and they do not find a positive net savings, then we won't proceed with it. And we won't proceed with anything until we come back to present you with what savings we were able to find. So if you approve the item tonight, then the next step would be to allow Mark to go out to market with it and then come back in January to ask you to proceed with it. So tonight is just basically giving us the okay to go look for those savings.
All right, does anybody want to attend a motion to allow the city staff to proceed with refunding for the debt service savings?
Yeah, I move that we consider authorizing city staff to consult and proceed with refunding for debt services for the city's outstanding combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation series 2010.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Linda, second. Any further discussion? Please enter your vote. Motion passes five zero. Next up.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Consider appointing a chair of a tax increment refinancing zone. We need a chair. You can see the current members, Darrell Tippi, Bruce Cates, Councilmember Chris Pugh, Councilmember Chad Bondell, Towne County Precinct Commissioner Devin Allen, J.R. Labby, Vice President of the Hospital District, and Dr. Eugene Giovanni Chancellor. I will tell you that I don't think that Eugene Giovanni would have time, or J.R. Labby. And Commissioner Allen is everywhere right now. So, I mean, those I would have questions with, they'd be able to make the meetings because they're so busy. So anybody have suggestion on who should the chair be?
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Pugh as chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, please enter your vote. And I know Devin because I've appointed her to a, a couple of boards. So she's going to be leading a board. All right. Next up. One-year agreement with Net Genius for information technology services at the annual cost of $119,000.
Mr. Mayor Lakita Sutton will present this to you if that's appropriate.
The finance staff took an opportunity to look at some of the contracts that we currently have in place. We have had technology service, services with Integrotech for a number of years. And we thought it would be advantageous for the city to go out to see if we're still getting our needs met, number one, because technology has advanced since we initially onboarded Integrotech. And just to also honestly do some price comparisons. I've worked at a city before, and I've used in-house IT services as well as contracted, contracted it out. And I thought that that we may do ourselves an injustice if we don't go out and see if there are other opportunities for us. So in September, we went ahead and released an RFP for IT services. And we actually got a really good response. So we received a response from seven different firms who were interested to come and, and do service with the city of Kennedale. We were excited. We got, um, um, we made a scoring criteria, which was including your packet. And that scoring criteria had six different sections, and we assigned points to each, each section. We also put a weight to each factor. So we didn't want to say, okay, well, we're only going out because we, we want to focus on price. Well, that's important to us. But the most important thing is the ability for the firm to satisfy the city's needs and also the contractor's experience and knowledge and capabilities. Our next step was to get our senior staff on board. So we let a group of senior staff review all seven RFPs, assign scores to each firm. And we came back and we talked about them as a whole. We went ahead and tallied the scores. And we came up with two firms who were our top contenders. And by the time we conducted interviews with those firms, and the interviews consisted of myself, my two staff members, human resources was in on it, police department, fire department. We really wanted library. I mean, we wanted to hear from every senior staff person because it's, it's their staff that needs, has technology needs. I've been hearing about different technology needs since I onboarded here in Kennedale. And so we wanted to look at firms who had experience with other cities. And luckily, the, at least four of the firms that submitted had that significant experience. Well, when we conducted the interviews, we had called the top two firms over to talk to us in person because we realized that not only, you know, are we looking at their expertise and how they look on paper, but they need to be a, a good fit for Kennedale. So we sat around and we, we had a conversation with the two firms. We, we talked to them at length. And when I got scores back from senior staff and from finance staff, we agreed that we really favored Net Genius in what they had to offer. They submitted an RFP that met every one of the criteria that the city is looking for. They had four city references on their RFP. So we did our due diligence, and we contacted each one of those cities. And we got rave reviews from different departments within those cities. Some of the comments were saying, you know, we would recommend them 110%. We should have signed them long ago. We didn't receive one negative comment. And we're coming this evening because in addition to that, we've also found savings with the contract that they offered us. We are looking at over $5,000 a month in savings. No, I'm sorry, not a month, over the course of a year. Currently, our IT firm had raised our pricing over three years ago. And we were paying $10,400 a month. And we've been doing so for about three years. So that was equals to $124,800 that we're currently spending. This contract with Net Genius is $119,700. That's saving $5,100 annually. The great thing about it is that the service that the city would be receiving is greater than what the city is receiving. than what the city is receiving at this time. And the reason I say that is because we, we, the city is growing, and we need a ticketing system for our IT needs, and right now, we don't have that. So, for example, IT is under my department, but I don't have an opportunity to log on to a system, see what tickets were submitted, how long it's taking the firm to respond to the tickets, and, and different evaluation criteria. I'm not able to look at that currently. Net Genius has a ticketing system, they have a dedicated person that will be dedicated to Kennedale, they have a very tight response time, and I asked their references about those as well, just to be sure. What I really like about them also is they provide guidance to the city, because a couple months ago, there, there was something going around, I don't know if it was spyware, or it was some kind of attack that was happening on some local governments. And when I, when I heard about it, you know, I was, I was shocked because I didn't hear about it from internally, from our firm, I heard about it outside, talking to other finance people, and, you know, it's just, we're at a point now where we need to protect our networks, and so this firm can also offer guidance in that area, advanced security and protection against spyware. They also have a 24-hour monitoring service, and they have guaranteed response times. So I believe that it would greatly benefit the city to select Net Genius as their IT provider. The idea would be to, because I know what you're thinking, you're thinking, "We have had the same firm for 10 years, how will we transition?" Well, we have, the current contract that we have in place with Integrotech does allow us to get out of that contract with a 30-day notice, and our idea is to have the firm to commit to helping the new firm to onboard. So the firm that we want to select has been to Kennedale, the team has looked at the IT infrastructure here, and is ready and willing to come and work with us, and to work with the current firm while they outprocess in Net Genius in processes. So this evening, we're asking you to approve the contract with Net Genius, and I can take any questions if you have any.
Does Net Genius help protect you? I guess the kind of things, and maybe Chad can talk more about it, is that cities have been attacked by ransomware.
That's the one, that's what I was, I couldn't think of it.
I probably can tell you what ransomware is.
This actually happened to the company that I worked for before we got purchased. So if you don't know what ransomware is, basically, somebody in your corporation gets an email, they click on a link, and it goes into your data structure and basically encrypts your data, except you don't have the key to decrypt it. And then they say, "Wire us this, the next amount of money," and we'll send you the key to get your data back, and you are literally held hostage. It sucks, it happens, so, but that's what ransomware does.
And this company would help us protect against ransomware?
Absolutely. When this company came out, the two top firms that we selected, I invited both of them out, because I wanted them to be comfortable in looking at our, at our infrastructure, because some of it is outdated, and some of our servers and things like that are outdated, and we don't have recommendations for what we need to be doing to protect ourselves. And so when they came out, they actually found something that was vulnerable. This firm actually made a recommendation before they were even hired, and they found something that was vulnerable. They talked to our current IT staff, and he did agree that it was vulnerable, so they worked, actually kind of worked together to get that shut down, and this is while the firm was still interviewing. So I'm really confident that they'll, they'll help us with those type of things, and, you know, their references were just, you know, were just stellar. They, they, they tell us they don't worry about attacks, because Net Genius, they actually send, not only do they do a ticketing system, every month, they send you reports of your, of their monitoring that they're doing, and recommendations.
And would save us $5,000?
Would save us $5,000 over the course of the year. So this first, this contract is just for a one-year period, and then they don't do several-year contracts, and so annually, we would bring it back and, and revisit it.
All right. You are ahead.
Yeah, I, I made revisions to that contract, they haven't accepted them yet, so there may be some boilerplate terms to negotiate. So I guess what I'm getting to is, is if you want to award the contract, if you could authorize the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate and finalize?
Or would you rather postpone it until the next meeting, or which way works best?
Well, that would be your decision. I mean, the, the price would not change.
Yeah.
$19,700 for one year.
Because of the notice that we need to give the current contractor, if you're comfortable doing that and authorizing us to negotiate, the city attorney's recommended boilerplate kinds of changes, I think that might be a better approach.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to, can you say it again, Drew?
Authorize the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate and finalize the agreement with Net Genius?
Do you want to say so moved?
I move that we authorize the city manager to enter, to negotiate in, yeah, what he said.
Did you say so moved?
Yeah, so moved. Almost had it there.
Any further discussion? If not, please enter your vote.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's no big deal. Will they deal with the radios, like the police radios?
They do, they do. Actually, the, the president of the company is a former police officer, so they sat around with Chief Williams, and he was very satisfied with the knowledge they had in that area.
Josh, we'd appreciate if you wouldn't hold that against them.
All right, so please enter your vote. All right, motion passes five zero. Consider adoption of ordinance 687, amending the Kennedale Municipal Code by amending Exhibit A, Schedule F, Section 2-3, fees for licenses, inspection permits, et cetera, to adjust fees associated with multifamily building permits, engineering plat and plan review, construction inspection, and city manager's annual dental checkup.
Oh, thank you.
I may have made up the dental checkup, that wasn't on there.
So the purpose of this is to allow us to recoup our costs as it relates to plan review, review of construction drawings, plats, as, as well as potentially inspections. And this doesn't necessarily need to happen across the board, but we've got some more significant projects coming online. We charge a fairly nominal fee for, for example, plan review, and, you know, we pay Shield right now a pretty significant amount of money in order to review those plans. You know, we have developments that come in, sometimes take multiple reviews, months on end, so our costs will exceed what we collect in the fees that are allowed by our current fee schedule. This would allow us to utilize a third-party reviewer and to basically pass on whatever those costs are for that project to the developer. Same thing with inspections, we do have a building inspector on staff, there may be, however, some projects that are more significant that she is not able to either do in terms of time, if there are several projects going on at once, or in terms of scope, for example, multifamily development, or the hotel inspection, may be something we want to bring in a third-party inspector to, to do. So this will actually save us funds in terms of sort of reducing our loss, so to speak, in terms of what we collect versus what we pay for our own engineering review.
Melissa, is it customary to pass on those fees to the developer, or are the developers going to be surprised when we do this?
There are many cities that do this, especially smaller cities, that, that don't have all these individuals on staff.
I just want to continue, I don't want to shut the door on opportunity if it's something that's maybe out of the norm, but if that's expected by developers...
We're very, very low on our fees, and we know that, and we haven't done a full fee analysis, but we're lower than city, other cities on fees, but a lot of smaller cities do char, pass on the third-party fees because they don't have the staff to do it internally.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 687.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 687 as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion passes five zero. Next up, public hearings. Conduct a public hearing considering ordinance 685 regarding request by Trifecta Homes, LLC, for rezoning from R3 to R4 residential, approximately four acres, located 962 Cory Edwards Drive, Emerald Crest Estates. I think that's all I have to read, I'm not going to read the rest of that. All right, first up, staff presentation.
So the location, I think you're probably familiar with, is on Bowman Springs in Cory Edwards. So here's the map of the location, and the, basically, the red dot here, it shows the site of this proposed development. The surrounding uses are pretty varied, there's a variety of commercial uses, including the Fellowship Academy, there's the Spiral Gymnastics, the school district has property in the, I believe that's the junior high, right? And then there's some single-family residential and agricultural land as well. So this is the current zoning map, the surrounding zoning is, is, like I said, pretty varied with UV zoning categories. This, the property is, the property is surrounded in the red, the UV here is Spiral Gymnastics, you have some single-family homes across the street, Fellowship Academy, you have Glenna Village Creek, that is this gray, across the street, that says PDSE, and then R3 with the Winding Creek Development, as well as the ISD property, which is R3. The future, future land use map shows this as residential, that's the kind of pale yellow, shows an urban village actually at the intersection, not too far away, but this is proposed to be residential. So these are the, some of the front elevations of the houses that are proposed, the owner, the owner of the property is requesting R4 zoning, so just as a reminder, R4 is a zoning category that you recently passed that allows for smaller lot homes that are 50-foot by 100-foot minimum, and so this would be the first case for the R4 zoning. So these are some of the front elevations, the developers are here, and I'll let them talk about this a little more, but these are some of the housing types that would be built. You'll notice that the garages are in the rear, that's actually something that's required by all of our R zoning districts. You'll see the garages in the front on many of our subdivisions, because they're planned developments, or they were developed as planned developments, but this would meet the current zoning code with the rear garages, which allows for a higher level of architecture on the front of the homes, more appealing homes. So this is the rear elevation, some of the rear elevation showing the garage in the rear. So this is their site plan, tonight is just, of course, a zoning case, but wanted to show you the site plan for the homes that are being proposed, they're looking at 10 homes. The primary reason for the R4 really is the cul-de-sac. As you can see, this is kind of an oddly shaped property, it's relatively small, so it takes some creative site planning to, to sort of fit these homes in, and have the circulation that we require. So most of the lots actually would meet the R3 zoning requirements, or many of them would, it's really mainly these ones around the cul-de-sac that are 50-foot across the You have in your place, I wanted to kind of compare this to the developments that have occurred, that are Glenna Village Creek, and also Winding Creek that are next to this, to give you a sense of how well this fits in in the area. Interestingly, if you look at Glenna Village Creek, the lots they'll be looking at for this proposed development are larger than the lots in Glenna Village Creek, that was a planned development, those are mostly 50-foot lots, but they have some that have frontages of 33-foot, 34-foot, 33-foot, you can see that along the cul-de-sac, so it's the same, similar kind of challenge when you're dealing with cul-de-sacs, but these lots in Glenna Village Creek, which has just been completed actually, and all of those homes have been sold, will be smaller than what is being proposed here tonight. So that was a PD development, and it's an image of those homes. I think what is being proposed will not be a, is, is not proposed to be a PD, so again, we'll have the rear entry garages, so I think you have an enhanced architectural elevation on the front. Winding Creek is the other neighborhood that's adjacent, you'll see on the third page of your handout, the plat for Winding Creek. It's interesting, this was built in 2008, or it was platted in 2008, and this, back in 1993 zoning code, which this would have complied with, we had a 70-foot requirement for R3 frontage width, currently, we require 80-foot. So you'll see, most of these lots are 70-foot, but the ones along the cul-de-sac, like Glenna Village Creek, like the one that's being proposed tonight, actually, these are smaller than the one that's being proposed this evening, some of these are 30 feet, 34 feet, 47 feet, and so forth, so you'll notice that this is a very similar development as to what's being proposed tonight. So Glenna Village Creek and Winding Creek would actually have been more suitable to an R4 zoning, they actually don't meet the R3 zoning code at all. And then there's an image of some of those homes in Winding Creek. Winding Creek also has homes that have five and six-foot side setbacks, so again, very similar to the R4 zoning. So staff does recommend approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the developers are here with their engineer as well.
So the R4, that's essentially, that development, that zoning requires what Arlington would call zero lot line homes, I mean, you're talking about 5,000 square foot lots?
R4 is, is not zero lot line, R4 has a minimum of five-foot setbacks, so the same as, as what happened in Glenna Village Creek, those have five-foot setbacks, and then many of the homes in Winding Creek as well. Side setback.
But the, the back rear setback is 20 feet?
I believe it's 30, I didn't bring all the spatial, I think it's...
What's that?
15, I'm sorry.
15 square, so it, it's possible that you may have, say, a two-story house, 15 square feet behind your, the house that you have, possible?
It's the same as R3.
Yeah.
The rear setback is the same as R3 in R4.
And, so you're talking about four acres, in R4, you probably could put more than 10 homes there, right?
Potentially, it might be kind of tough, given the shape of the property. It's just an odd shape, it's, it's, you know, it'd be, it'd be tough, but I'm not a designer, so.
Because a site plan is just a site plan, they can change the site plan if they could get it into more R4 homes. And my another, my other question is, George, have we gotten a response yet on the engineering study for the water drainage, it's right next to that?
We don't have it finished, but it's getting close. I had some discussion with the engineer, and I think that drainage examination that we're doing review is close to finished.
And so if we don't have that drainage, i- is it possible that that drainage issue might affect this place?
I can't say that it wouldn't affect it, but obviously, that's something that would be...
You're saying very small?
Very small.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa? Are you thinking about fire trucks turning around?
Well, this, I, I don't know, and their engineers here can probably answer that better than me, this plan has been reviewed by our staff, including Public Works and the fire chief, to make sure that it does meet our requirements, the ability to turn around and all of that, and they have approved it, but I can't recall what the width is, I think our minimum is 24 feet for the street, for the street.
The street, 28.
28 feet, but this has been, we've had probably four or five DRC development... But this has been, we've had probably four or five DRC Development Review Committee meetings with the developers and our staff has looked at that to make sure it meets our requirements. But they can speak to the width, I'm sure. Like I said, I'm sure they can probably answer that. The, what I was comparing with Glenna Village Creek and Winding Creek was the width of the lots.
Are you referring to the street width or the right-of-way width? Two different things. 28 feet would be the paving of the street, back a curb, back a curb. It'd still be a 50-foot right-of-way.
Including the sidewalks.
Including the sidewalks.
Chris?
Larry, if you can come up here and let me show you what we're talking about. Maybe you can. Actually, the right-of-way. It's 25 feet on each side of the center line proposed on the street. That's 50-foot right-of-way. The street would be built inside of that and so would your sidewalks.
Okay.
But what I'm trying to say is it's not as detailed on this one. It's just a, a picture. So would they come back later and say, why do you got to be bigger? Is it not spec on here and that's short of these?
Staff and engineers will go over all that and make sure that they comply with all minimum requirements, which.
We come back through and change it. Now it'll be even smaller after we approve this R4.
I, I believe their engineer has planned for a 50-foot right-of-way and adequate turnaround for fire trucks and cul-de-sac. They know that's a requirement, so they should be ready to adhere to that.
I guess my other concern, and the engineer can come up in a minute, is there's a substantial drop in this property from Cory Edwards to the back of this property where this detention pond is. And I don't know how far it is, but it's, it's steep and.
Well, just looking.
I would at least like to hear what the plan is to address that.
Well, according to the topos on this, it's a 20-foot drop from the front of that last lot just to the back end of it.
Yeah. And it gets, it's pretty shallow at first, but the back half of that property has a very steep grade. I get, everybody else can ask their questions, but that would be what I would like to hear whenever the developers.
He's here.
Okay, my name's J.D. Farmer with Metro Engineers in Arlington. And yeah, there, there is a lot of drop on that. There will probably be some retaining walls between, because, you know, the step down between the houses, that's about the only way you can get down. I don't know how, whatever your question is there, but.
Because the grade goes front to back. You can't put, you don't put a retain wall in the floor of the backyard.
No, tho, those will have to probably be split level. You know, they'll probably have to drop the back down, have the garage come in lower and have the finished floor and up at the street up higher. You know, until they have a specific house plan, but that's probably what they'll have to do.
Is that drainage easement already existing or is that something you guys would have to dedicate? The one that goes across the side back here?
The back. This plan was, this property was planted, we, we did this a few years ago. And at that time, we had planned on putting a, an, our drive in the back. And so we had a drainage and driveway access back there. So, you know, we'll have to abandon the plat that's there now. So we will be probably having to dedicate a new drainage-only easement there.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, just, you know, because that affects, you know, like the, the comment of having a 15-foot setback, well, if you've already got a 20-foot drainage and utility easement back there that doesn't go all the way to the back property line, now you're pushing 25 feet to the back fence. I was just kind of curious if that was something that was going to stay, because that really closes in your buildable space that you're looking at in a lot of these.
With that water running along the back, I know that's a problem you've had with that subdivision to the north. We, we intend to collect all our water and carry it to the detention pond so that it doesn't dump on those people. And so we're going to have to have a system back in the rear to catch that water and convey it to the pond. And that's the reason for the width of the easement back there. Now, that doesn't restrict you from putting a driveway or stuff in it, but, you know, we've got to keep it unobstructed.
Right.
For, you know, the drainage to get through there.
Any questions for the engineer? So if, if the detention pond, it's only designed just to hold the water and let it release?
Yeah, there are all kinds of different ponds, you know, for different reasons. Detention ponds specifically are for flood control. And the, the way they work is you run more water into it than leaves it. And that's, that's the reason you have a volume. It's, it stacks up in the pond because it's going out slower than it's coming in. The other ponds you have for environmental, they're, they're built differently. The environmentals are, you have silt ponds, they're built differently. They, they all have different functions and they're all built differently. But in this case, your ordinance calls for detention. I don't know that, I don't see it on anybody else's stuff, but it's in there. And I know when we did this the first time, your engineer that you had at that time, I, I just remember him saying, you know, I'm just glad that we don't have to fight over the detention ponds. So evidently, they've had some arguments with other people about having to actually build them, so.
I guess because detention ponds end up looking ugly when there's a, when there's a drought, it just becomes a weeded area.
Okay, well.
As opposed to a.
Dry lakes. They're not wet lakes. So they're always, you know, except for when it's raining and then the water will stack up in there and you just mow them just like anything else. Now, you can build a wet lake if they're big enough. Now, this is too small for that. But we have done it where they're bigger and we just go ahead and excavate on down below the required volume for detention and, you know, we're making a static lake, put a fountain in it and that sort of thing. But in this case, that's too small to do that with. But you, you just mow on the slopes or, you know, such as you can get a, you know, mower on them and then the bottoms are, you know, fairly flat.
Okay. So I'll ask Melissa one more question. So as opposed to going, staying at R3, how many more different houses are we talking about by going to R4? It's adding how many more houses?
I don't, that's.
It's kind of standard saying that we presented pro- each and houses. We're not going any more houses then, because there is no way we can put more houses.
But if it was, if it was R3, how many houses would you be able to put in there?
We can probably six, six houses.
Well, this, this is R3 here and this is designed.
Well, some of that's R4.
Well, this is, actually, your ordinance, I think that's a little misleading, those 50-foot on the cul-de-sacs, you measure, if you look at your ordinance, it measures the, the width of a lot at the building line, not at the front property line. And so these, if you look back at where the building line is, they are the required width for the lot. So it's not required for R4.
Well, if it's not the required width, but the, it's not necessarily required width for R4, it's the entire square footage. So what are the square footage we're looking at?
We will have the right square footage.
I mean, because an R3 square footage is about 8750.
Yeah, this, this was designed for R3.
So are all the lots 8750 or, or higher?
They, that would be a minimum, would be the, the R3 lot.
So the minimum line on this property are all 8750?
Well, from this drawing we have here, which I think's what we're going with, yes.
So I'm seeing no from behind Melissa.
Well.
Basically, we expressed some concern around the cul-de-sac that it was going to be able to meet that, that square footage and that they were going to run into some problems with the building line. So.
So, so which one is it? Do, are all of them 8750 or are some of them not 8750?
This was designed for R3. This particular drawing was done before they ever talked about changes on it. It's done for R3 zoning.
So if they, if they make all the R3 zoning, then why do you need the R4 zoning?
I'm not sure.
So when we originally submitted this plan, city came and I think they talked to the engineers and they came out and saying that there are a few lots that it's not meeting the R3, R3 zoning requirement. That's why we need to go to the R4. There is like, I think, three or four, three or four lots that, that they are not meeting the R3 zoning.
Okay.
When we, when we do a final plat, they'll have the square footage on the lot.
All right. All right, well then, let me call you back up. I'm open the public hearing. And we've had two people sign up to speak. Julie Webb? Yeah, he gets one. And Melissa, let me just clarify, the 80% or 20% rule, has the 20% rule been made in this case?
Uh, no. The total acreage required for, there's 11.37 acres in the 200-foot radius. And there's two points, so that requires a 2.274 acres represented in opposition. We have 1.61.
Okay.
That doesn't meet that.
All right. Julie Webb, I live at 1027 Winding Creek Drive. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns. I would like to first state that I am speaking as a property owner and not as a representative of the Kennedale School Board. I am here this evening to express some of the comments and concerns that have been discussed about the proposed zoning change of Emerald Crest Estates from R3 to R4. My husband and I have not been a part of this neighborhood for very long, but we are proud of this close-knit neighborhood that has chosen to handle this issue within our neighborhood. Out of respect of all parties involved, we have chosen not to be contentious by involving the rest of Kennedale. Before we move on, it's important to note Emerald Crest was and is currently showing five to six plots on four acres. Winding Creek homes were built or purchased with the understanding that R3 homes would be neighboring them. If you'll notice on your first handout that was given to you, the developer is now proposing the four acres of Emerald Crest be rezoned to R4 lots. You can see on that the developer's proposal, only two lots are actually R4. The rest of the neighborhood is R3. We are just requesting that the developer only build the R3 lots. This would mean the two lots that back up to the junior high would be combined to make one large R4, R3 lot. On the other handout, you can see the same-sized lots in Arlington within four acres. These lots are the same size as the R4 lots in Kennedale, but are classified as R5 lots by Arlington standards. These homes are very close together and at two stories high, two stories high would look disconnected townhomes. It's also important to take into account that all of these homes will likely have two to three cars. Will these fit in the small driveway or rear entry garage or will they be conveniently parked on the street? My neighborhood has some concerns and doubts that R3 homes will be built at all if you vote to change the zoning to R4. Our trust has been clouded by the lack of information and incorrect information given by the developers. For instance, during a P&amp;Z meeting, the developer was asked if they would do any kind of excavation. The response was no. We both know that isn't an option and gives us pause for concern on the experience the developers have. In conclusion, we feel this isn't the type of zoning that is best for Emerald Crest and that R4 homes will negatively impact our property values. We are asking you to consider what is best for the property and the existing community rather than a developer who is looking to make the max profit. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions for the speaker? Nope, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings me to J.D. Farmer. Oh, you spoke to, all right, so we already got you taken care of. And I believe that's the only person willing to speak on that issue. So I'll bring back city staff for any answering of those questions or concerns.
Yeah, I would just point out that this development is completely consistent with the adjacent developments of Glenna Village Creek and Winding Creek, both of which if, if zoned today would be R4 and would not qualify for R3. So it's a very compatible development with the homes that are already there. Glenna Village Creek had about 30 homes, which have all been sold. It's a beautiful neighborhood. I think this would be similar in size, actually a little bit larger lots than Glenna Village Creek and similar in size to Winding Creek, but would be, have, I think, nicer architecture in terms of the rear entry garages and having the architectural features in the front. Planning and zoning commission did recommend this unanimously and staff does recommend approval.
Any other questions for Melissa? All right, thank you. All right, so that brings us to.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Developer. Would you be opposed of changing those back two lots? And who came up with the dimensions for the detention pond?
I'm sorry.
As far as the detention pond goes? Could you adjust that detention pond a little bit and add to where you could make those lots a little bigger?
These lots as a design, I don't know where this is coming from. These all meet your, your R3 or zone and I don't know where this coming up if they don't. We have the width at the building line and we have the square footage in them. The detention pond is, that's a hydraulics.
I understand.
calculation. And, and that's got to be at the low point on the property and that's just what it takes to.
Well, if you're saying they meet R3, then why are we?
I don't know.
Here, why are we discussing this?
I think we were advised by the city to do that.
No, so it would, no, it's not. So we had a couple of lots that.
They all meet the square footage and they all meet the building line width. So what, what doesn't meet the criteria?
And so you didn't draw all these drawings? You didn't draw all these drawings?
Yes, I drew this.
You drew these drawings?
Yes.
I thought you'd mentioned these were drawn a couple of years ago.
Well, no, the existing Emerald Creek that's, that was planted, I did that for a different developer. And these guys bought it from them. And that's the one where we didn't have any streets or we just lost facing out on the street.
Mr. Farmer, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that those lots that are number six and number seven meet the R3 zoning requirement as they're designed on this plat?
They have the width at the building line and they have the square footage.
So unless this plat was modified or changed, they would all meet the R3 zoning requirement?
This was drawn before they ever talked about filing for zoning.
So what are the chances that we say we approve the R4? And you come back and draw something else different and add more homes?
You already mentioned the train. The train's going to be difficult enough with these lots at the size they are. And if you start squeezing them down, trying to get like 50-foot lots or something, I don't know how you'll ever, you'll get them to grade.
Okay, I'm still confused then. I thought it was the two cul-de-sac lots where we're making it to go to R4.
This, what, what does not meet R3 criteria?
So we did the measurements on the building line and had concerns about whether some of those lots around the cul-de-sac would meet the requirements for R3, would meet the 80-foot.
So they meet the 80-foot.
Just simple math.
Why are we rezoning it?
Just simple math. If you have 50-foot on a 50-foot radius, which is what you're showing in the front, and you have a 30-foot building line, that makes it 80-foot from the center. Just prorating it out, that's 80-foot. 50-foot on 50-foot radius, 80-foot on a, so it's 80-foot.
So you're arguing that they're all R3 lots?
Yes.
Then why are we going to R4?
So originally, we were under, under impression that the cul-de-sac lot is not meeting the R3s, I mean, R, R, yeah, R3 zoning and that's the reason we applied for R4 zoning.
Well, if that's incorrect and, and in fact, the R4 zoning is not approved. Well, if that's incorrect, and in fact, the R4 zoning is not approved, then this plat would not be approved...
That's right.
...the way it is, and it would have to be modified before it could be approved.
Yeah, so we want, sorry, sorry.
Well, and that's not even a plat anyway, that's just a preliminary drawing. He's going to have to come back with a plat anyway.
This is a preliminary plat, and, but our concern is if we don't be able to get the rezon to R4, then we won't be able to build these 10 houses. Then we will just back to, have to go back to the five or six houses. That's what it's going to happen.
Well, Mr. Farmer is saying, as your engineer, that these lots would meet, 10 lots would meet the R3 zoning.
That's correct.
Apparently, you and your engineer don't agree on that.
No, so we agree on it, but then when city came in, and city said that we have some issues, and we might, there might be running into some issues, and that's the reason we applied for the R4 zoning.
It seems to me there's no reason to change this to R4 if your engineer's saying that these are all three, R3 lots.
Yeah, so, yeah, as long as we can build these houses, then we don't, if we don't get a problem in future with the city saying, "Oh, I'm sorry, need to go back to the, reapply for the R4 zoning," then that's, we don't, that's, we've been delayed this project almost over a year now, so...
But I'm just saying, I've got your engineer here saying that these all meet R3 lots.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that you table the action on this item until we can remeasure and determine whether those lots meet the R3 requirement or not?
It's up to you. Well, let's just get some, back. What do you think, Linda?
According to the engineer, it's R3.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion to deny the request to change it to R4 based upon that information.
Do I have a second for that? Before?
I would second that.
All right, now discussion.
I guess in the grand scheme of things, if you're...
Yeah, because if it's R3 and he says it, then, because you're expert that we pay, you paid to say this, it seems to me...
Yeah, if that's the case, then just come to us with the plat.
Yeah, just come with us with the plat and make sure the plat meets the requirements.
And if it doesn't at that point, then we can come back to this issue.
Yeah, and then we can come back to...
Let Melissa explain. I mean, because you keep saying you're...
I've already explained it, I don't really know. I mean, basically, when we began to look at some of the requirements for that circle in terms of where that needs to be, and the radius that needs to be, and our engineers started to look at the 30-foot required setback, and that's where you look at that building line, I think there would be some challenges, just as you see challenges in Glenna Village Creek, just as you see challenges in Winding Creek, where those do not meet the R3 requirements. Winding Creek does not meet R3. Glenna Village Creek does not meet R3. You have challenges when you hit those cul-de-sacs. And when we started to look at the required radius of the circle and the required setback of 30 feet and where those are, there were several lots that we felt weren't going to meet that.
Well, he seems to disagree.
I understand that.
And there seems that our engineer needs to offer an explanation as to why they are saying it doesn't meet the requirement.
So, the onus is on him to make sure that it does, right?
On the plat.
Sorry, I never experienced this where the applicant actually argues against their own case. Don't know what to tell you.
Okay. I'm confused, it seems like they're arguing against their own case, that R3 is what it is now, and it's good.
What will happen is if the R3, and they are saying that meets that, if the plat is submitted, and this is a preliminary plat, and we determine that it does not meet that requirement, the plat would not be allowed or approved unless that configuration is redesigned so that all of the lots meet R4, R3.
And that's on them, as they're saying they're good with it.
Yeah, so the question is, would you be comfortable with a reconfiguration where there were lots that did not meet all of the R3 requirements and want to replant it to R4 in order that they could make all of these lots, to be sure they could make all the lots fit on this property?
I think they'd have to come back, because if they're not sure right now, and they're asking us to make that decision, I mean, I'm hearing conflicting messages.
Well, I think something you need to, you know, I understand this isn't the MO for Kennedale, but when you're looking at a zoning case, you're not looking at a site plan. You're saying, does this lot make sense for R4? That's really your question here tonight. You're not approving a site plan, that's not what you're approving. You're saying, is R4 a consistent or compatible zoning for this lot in this location?
Well, Melissa, I'm arguing that, he's arguing that R3 is consistent and compatible. He's not arguing R4 anymore.
I don't know what to tell you on that, I really have nothing more to say about that.
And so, I mean, he's saying R3's fine, so why are we even arguing about having R4? I know you don't have anything else to say about that.
As I said, I think we may run into some challenges, particularly if there's, and this happens, when we get into more detailed plan review on the radius of that circle, you know, when that starts to shift, we just had that happen on Oaks Court. So, Oaks Court, well, we've done a preliminary review, you understand? We don't have construction documents, so we've done a preliminary review in our Development Review Committee. That is not a review of construction documents. So, Oaks Court is a good example. When Oaks Court went to, came to DRC three or four times, we did a very preliminary review on something like this. Then they get into construction docs, and we start looking at some of the detail that comes in on that. It became a requirement that they had to elongate that cul-de-sac for various reasons, because when we got the construction docs, we had the details that showed us that that had to be elongated. So, that happens. That happens when you, this is not a construction document. When you start looking at utilities, when you start looking at, you know, the layouts, they shift. So, this is so tight, basically, we feel that there's a challenge with that cul-de-sac. That's why we recommended that for this site plan, they look at R4.
I still think, they've got an engineer who says it's R3. If they have problems, that's not on us, that's on their engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know what your question is, but okay.
Yeah, well, my question is, is why are we having to do the insurance on that, going to R4, when they're okay with R3? Why are we pushing an R4?
Because we believe this is a very positive development for Kennedale, that it will bring property valuation to Kennedale, that it will enhance the area. So, we work with developers to help make their project happen when it's compatible with our comprehensive plan and good for the city.
Yeah, I understand that part, Melissa, that's pretty much clear to me, but it doesn't explain to me that you're going to R3, you're suggesting an R4, when they're saying they're fine with an R3...
I understand, this is the first time I've met the engineer.
This should be just a dead issue right at this point.
Okay. I don't know what your question is, I'm sorry, I don't know what your question is.
I'm questioning...
Mayor, I agree with you. The engineer has tonight said they don't want R4 zoning, and I think that's, the engineer has said you don't need R4 zoning. The developer is saying he thinks he does. The staff thinks that may be necessary if, in fact, this is the plat they're going to want to build on the ground. If you don't approve the R4 zoning, and it doesn't meet those requirements, we will not recommend approval of a plat. And this project wouldn't go forward with this number of lots.
And they can come back.
If you approve R4 zoning, they could build without question exactly what's on this picture in front of you. If you don't approve it, they may not be able to do that.
And again, that's on them, because they have an engineer who's saying they can do...
Mayor, you're not arguing with the staff, I agree with you.
I just want to argue with you anyway.
I know.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on whether or not you want to postpone it, then defeat the motion, and make another motion to postpone, or do you want to move forward?
I would like to have my motion stand.
Sandra, can I have a word from you? You haven't coughed yet, so...
I'm going to say, I agree with Linda. I mean, if they can build this on R3, why change it? You know, and I understand it more happens with R4.
No, so, we're going to be building only, we're building only 10 houses, we're not building more than 10 houses on this lot. That's the maximum we're going to build.
But you can build 10 with R3, right?
Yes, so, our concern is, like, was Melinda explaining that if something shifts or something like that, and if we get, if we want to be able to build the lot five and six, and if it falls on the R4 zone, then we want to be able to build those houses. And that's the reason we are requesting to change it to the R4, so that way we won't run into that issue two months later when we start a project, apply for the plot, replotting.
So, if you change it to R4, you don't put the same effect on the house that you would with R3 or R4?
That's correct, that's correct. So, we are not changing, we are not making any lots smaller than what, so this is basically we're going to be submitting. But only our concern is the lot five, lot number five and six right now, which is going to be causing a problem to us, that's...
Lot five and six, or lot six and seven?
Six and seven, sorry, six and seven.
But your engineer disagrees, he thinks that'll fit R3. I mean, I think it's probably a good project, but I'm hearing mixed messages, and that's what's throwing me for a loop here.
So, when you first came a year ago, did you want R3?
No, we want, we want, the reason we purchased it, we wanted the multifamily home, we're going, we were going to build the townhomes up there. That's what our original plan was, to build the...
They weren't the owners when this plat was drawn.
Right, but last...
No, then...
You said that, and how, what your original plan, correct?
Original plan was this one, and then we decided, okay, we can, if we can get approved the multifamily, then we were going to build the townhouses. But since we didn't do, so we were going with this one. But then, we ran into the problem with the lot seven and five and seven, so we were thinking that if we can go ahead and get the R4, then we won't, we don't need to worry about that, and we can just start our project.
But when you were originally purging the Kennedale with this development, what would you have been hoping for?
Originally, when we purchased, we had in mind to build the townhouses, originally.
If there's more further discussion, please enter your vote. Motion was denied, and keep it R3. All right, next up, amendments to employment agreement. City manager, George Campbell.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment of employment agreement as discussed in the executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please enter your vote. I need a motion to adjourn, this time we're just going to raise our hands. I got a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passing in.